Moving forward, we can begin the Tuesday, December 8th meeting of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners. Please stand for the pledge and remain standing for a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we come today to bow our heads and open this meeting in prayer. We ask that you bless us with our time together today. May we seize and hold firmly all the things you want us to understand. May our hearts always be ready to respond to you and your wisdom. We also ask that you pour out your healing mercies on all those who are in need of help. We pray all this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. All right, so the first order of bids is an opening and reading of bids, and we have a couple of FEMA bids.
We do. The first bid is for a pre-disaster mitigation grant program. We received four bids. Sorry, this is Jessica Clark, county engineer. This is county engineer, Department of Business, Structure, Planning and Growth on the 7th and 11th floors. The first bid is from Jackson Demolition Services of Rochester, R&amp;R Excavating for Mishawaka, $212,900. Jerry Reed of Mishawaka, Indiana, $288,900. And Richard Brothers in the South Bend in the amount of $338,275. Were there any bids submitted that were not read aloud? Hearing none, we recommend that the board commissioners physically accept the opening and reading of bids and turn them over to our department for review and recommendation at a later date.
Any questions or comments related to this?
I certainly am glad to see so many bids. It's nice to see competition.
Excellent. Does Ms. Clark's motion exist?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Of those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you.
Our second bid is for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, and we have the same four bidders. Jackson Demolition Services for $90,000. R&amp;R Excavating for $81,000. Jerry Reed, $98,100. And Richard Brothers at $88,571. Again, were there any bids submitted that were not read aloud? Hearing none, we recommend the board commissioners physically accept the opening and reading of this bid and turn it over to our department for review and recommendation at a later date.
Any questions or comments? Does Ms. Clark's motion exist?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to reports and requests. First is the accounts payable document from the commissioners. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we move on to bills passed by the St. Joseph County Council at a public hearing held on Tuesday, December 1st. The council passed the following. What I think we'll do is, since we've got a couple of items that may require some additional discussion, we will hear each of these items separately. So we've got Bill 10820, which is ordinance 8620. This is ordinance cleaning up from a hazard pay standpoint for activity related to COVID. Are there any questions or comments related to this?
Certainly. I'd comment that it's great to see the hazard pay extending to other county departments that have worked very hard and diligently and didn't just go draw unemployment. They saw their duty to serve the citizens of this county and faithfully and honorably did so, at risk to their families and themselves.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I will also note, I want to thank John Murphy, members of council who were diligently along with Steve Dalton to make sure that, and Mike Triple, to make sure that this process is done properly. So if there are no more questions or comments, is there a motion?
Well, I agree with what you said. I approve that too. So there's a motion to move forward or pass actually ordinance number 86-20.
Second.
Motion, a second. Of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have Bill 1920, ordinance 8720. This is a probate court salary amendment that I believe is just changing, making a, not changing anything from a financial standpoint, just changing a classification. Any questions or comments?
I congratulate the probate court for staying on top of things and the proper allocation of this grant money.
There are no more questions or comments. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Bill number 87-20.
Second.
Or ordinance, actually ordinance, not bill. Ordinance, my fault.
Yes, correction. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Moving on to 11820, ordinance 820, which is the monthly transfers and appropriations. Any questions or comments?
Yes. Mr. Murphy, maybe you could help. It seemed like there's a lot of money being allocated extra for the Penn Township Assessor's Office. And I think that was a contract that when it first started wasn't supposed to, they estimated it might cost $30,000. And it looks like it's, what, it's a retroactive for four years? It's up to $132,000. But even that's with the $55,000, excuse me, $55,000 reduction for the abnormality of the pandemic striking 2020. Am I, is there any kind of explanation from the assessor's office regarding this extensively high request and then the adjustment for 2020?
This is John Murphy. It's a contract with Tax Management Associates. It's segregated in a separate fund. So tax management receives the first year property, personal property tax audit revenue. So it's related to how much revenue they brought in. So that fund is about to, revenue and expenditures are always in balance equal. So there's no real cost to the county. It's just, these are the collections that were received in 2020 for the year. So we've had similar amounts in prior years. It's a, and then so tax management receives money for the first year. Then any subsequent years, those monies go to the county. It's a contract we've had for about four years.
Yeah, if I get the, the contract's done now, Dave, it's over.
That's what I, thank you, Michael. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. That's what I figured. As you know, as you note there, it's 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020. You know, I predicted this thing would cost a lot more than they said. And it seems I was right. Obviously, they didn't do much in 2020 with the pandemic. You know, Penn Township citizens are paying a lot more taxes thanks to this. And, but they probably shouldn't have been paying it all along. My next question, I'm sorry to hit you spontaneously, Jessica. Was it you or Mr. Shalios because of the $1.2 million was left for the toll road bridge?
Jessica Clark, county engineer, Department of Engineering, Planning and Growth on the 7th and 11th floors. The $1.2 million is a transfer of funding that was discussed during the 2019 budget cycle and the 2020 budget cycle for the deficit in the MDH fund due to the formula of the gas tax being changed and our revenues being decreased, plus the impact of COVID. So these are the funds that are necessary to make that fund whole for the calendar year 2020, based on the recommendation of the commissioners and the council at the time. Instead of cutting back personnel in 2020, we made the adjustment for 2021, knowing that we would need to transfer an X amount of dollars to make that money whole due to the decrease in revenue.
Thank you, Madam Engineer.
Are there any other questions or comments? I'll make a couple of quick comments. The first related to the Penn Township Assessor. Keep in mind, this is not additional cost. The, what was being proposed is we have an accurate assessment of properties in Penn Township. So there are some cases where properties went down. In other cases where property taxes went up. But we're not, we're trying to make sure it's fair and equitable because that's, that's how we believe the property tax system should be, should be run. People pay what they should pay, not too much or not too little. So that's, and also most of these costs were additional revenue that was brought in because assessments weren't, were needed to be tweaked. I also want to congratulate Public Works, especially Jessica, for the great work they did because we had conversations earlier this year when we anticipated the deficit could be twice as much. And that was before COVID adjusted the, some of the disbursements that we received. So we thought it was going to be maybe three times as much. So I appreciate the hard work and diligence that everyone in Public Works did to help mitigate those losses and bring it in as well as we did. So.
And Andy, if I could jump in regarding Tax Management Associates. I mean, in all due respect, David, it didn't cost more than we thought it would. It was based on a percentage. So the auditor's office is not surprised with what, you know, their recompense was. It was based on a percentage and it was fair. And now we're bringing in more revenue. So I think that's a good thing. And thank you all for your support for that.
Thank you, Mike, for your comments on that. But I do believe that I think when it was first sold four years ago, presented, I think the numbers were much lower. And it was, I predicted it's going to be around 200 grand. And that's where it would be at, was for the $55,000 reduction. So, but yes, it wasn't county money per se. It was citizens' money. And the county will get that money direct. So in the long run, thank you, Mike, for comments.
Yep, yep, thank you.
If there are no more questions or comments, is there a motion?
A motion to approve this ordinance 88-20.
Second.
Motion, a second. Of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, Bill 11420, which is ordinance 9220, which is the, an adjustment or amendment to the Air Pollution Control Ordinance passed by council. So I guess this, I don't know, is there anyone from the Health Department or council that could, that could speak to this? If not, I will do my best.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Mr. President, Councilmember Mark D'Angelo.
Excellent.
Your address, please.
2022 Oak Park Drive, South Bend, Indiana, 46617. Mr. President, I come to you today encouraging the commissioners to pass ordinance 9220. Unfortunately, spent a lot of time this summer dealing with more COVID-related matters than we anticipated and wanted to get to this sooner. But we got back to it and didn't get it passed until the fall, which may seem a little bit different at this point in time. At this point, most people probably aren't burning leaves. But we wanted to have it on the books, given the fact that there was such a terrible respiratory disease with COVID this year. And given the fact that we know it's probably not helpful for people that have had COVID or may get COVID to be exposed to any kind of air contaminant or pollutant. We thought we would strengthen the Air Pollution Control Ordinance by making these amendments to the ordinance. In general, some of the comments that were made the other night by council members were, you know, it's just a matter of public safety. There were some township fire chiefs that had logged in that were calling in support of it. I'm not sure if they're with us today or not. But I would say on a public safety point of view and on a health and air quality point of view, we thought this was a better way to go. And certainly do appreciate in the years past, you guys having done the amnesty period to help get the leaf program going. And I think we had a really successful leaf program this year with a new hybrid approach. And I think it probably would be unnecessary for people to keep burning their leaves. And, you know, it would be a quality of life issue too for anybody wanting to locate here or remain here in our county. We appreciate your support and consideration for passing ordinance 9220.
Excellent. Are there any questions or comments related to this?
Dave Sharon, Fire Marshal with Clay Fire, 5371 to Pinehurst, South Bend. And, and just to echo Commissioner, Commissioner Member Katian's right, it has always been a quality of life issue. And we know that those two times a year, our responses regarding respiratory issues have increased. Complaints for, always get sent to me and I deal with those. And the two big issues are the respiratory issues that people live close by. And they're the ones inhaling the smoke because the smoke never blows away from the people who are burning. And the people who light their piles up and think that they're going to sit there and not move until they come back two hours later. We're glad that finally some substantial change has been made to, to that Air Pollution Control Ordinance. The burning controls, actually, I'm sure you guys are well aware, were first put in there December of 1970. So we haven't had that many changes over the years that actually put some, some bite into it. In fact, a few years ago, we had a fellow who consistently ignored anything he was told regarding open burning permits or anything else because he said the fines were so low, it was cheaper for him to light his pile of leaves and trash on fire and, and pay the minimal fee than it was for him to have it hauled away. So I'm glad to see that we have a scale that, that actually is for those people who repeatedly don't like to follow rules. We constantly hear, well, I live in the county, as if we have different air that's, you know, walled off between cities and counties. So we appreciate that the council put this together and we appreciate your support on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I'd comment that it's a little disappointing that it didn't go through the council unanimously, that Mr. Root voted against it for some reason. And it's a very important piece that affects everybody. And the beginning of it says, whereas, due to concerns about air pollution and lung health of the citizens of St. Joe County. I thought it was a little shocking that it's not mentioning the obvious fire hazard. Fire is very, very dangerous. It doesn't care what you're, where you live at, what neighborhood. It doesn't care what race, color, religion you are. It, it's going to get you and it can hurt you and it can do a lot of harm. Otherwise, we wouldn't have structured fire departments and men and women risking their lives to try to save other people. So that the hazard of fire certainly should not be diminished in any way. Yes, this is being pushed as an air pollution control, but it also obviously helps get rid of terrible, terrible fire hazards. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Virtually attending a board of commissioners meeting.
Your name and address for the record?
Joshua Schizer, 33859, South West Lane, New Carlisle, Indiana. I'm the New Carlisle Fire Department Fire Chief. And just to go with Fire Marshal Sharon and Councilmember Commissioner Thomas, I'm sorry. You know, this is very important. You know, our crews, those, those weeks during the year where we get these amnesty and some of the reckless disregard, windy days. I spoke at the council member meeting. You know, there is no regard for public safety. And, and we get these fires that get out of control, get into people's property that never intended to get there. So now we have a smoke and a fire hazard and we're sending these crews unnecessarily into harm's way. And, and it just gets out of hand. And it's annually, and it's, it's sad that people do that. But it's nice to see we're finally hopefully getting some traction considered to handle some of these problems. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
This is Dr. Fleming. I have a comment. You know, it's not that I don't want people to be healthy about things or anything. But I also, you know, this year I put together a committee, came up with the plan of how they were actually were helping people pick up leaves. But now I think if we're going to upgrade this, we really need to move forward in the future so that we can help people pick up their leaves since we're demanding they can't burn them and all that. So I think it's good that we try to help them because it's going to be so costly for them to do that now. So if we can move forward with what we did this year for next year, I think that would be a good idea then. Because again, you know, it's not that I don't want people, you know, to have issues health-wise with when leaves are burned. And like what Dave Thomas said about, you know, fires and stuff like that, which I tend to agree with. But then again, you know, if we're demanding it, I think we need to help our citizens because we used to do that for years. Pick up, help pick up leaves. So I think that would be a good idea to move forward with in some way that we can do that. So yes, we're going to demand not doing leaf burning, but then now we're going to help our citizens get things done properly, hopefully. So that's just my thoughts.
I have a suggestion on that. This is Dave Lang, 17530, Bending Oaks Court, representing Knollwood West Homeowners Association. Many of us sought out a number of different vendors besides St. Joe County Recycling. We found lower prices and quite a few vendors to pick from to have our leaves picked up, obviously without burning them. The problem that all of our vendors ran into was that there was no place to dispose of the leaves. They had to drive all the way out to the airport. The airport facility is closed for an hour for lunch. It closes at 3:45 most days. It's closed on Veterans Day, which is at the peak of picking up leaves. I get it, it's a holiday. It's a very important holiday. But we need to make sure that we have someplace to take the leaves legally and get rid of them. And I think that would be great if we could have taken some of the money that we gave St. Joe County Recycling, $300,000. I'm certain we could have found a piece of land or someplace in Granger or other locations that are closer to where more of the leaves are so that we can get rid of them. Is there any possibility we can have this going into next year would help a lot? Lower all of our prices.
Well, I also know that there's places in Elkhart County, so maybe, and it goes, or Granger's a lot closer, you know, there, whatever. So anyway, that's just my thought.
And sir, they were paid approximately $300,000 on the front end, but I think they got nearly another $300,000 on the back end and with free gas and other services. So they actually got paid a lot more than most people are aware of, from my point of view. And several years ago, when we were developing the Beverly Towne County Park, I worked, tried to work, Madam Engineer and I worked together trying to make that a county leaf facility partially. And working with the city of South Bend, that where right now county residents have to pay to use the city organic services that closes for lunch. But back then Mayor Linky was very supportive of, if the county would develop a leaf facility on the south side, then all county residents could use the city facility on the north side, provided the city and all city residents could use the facility on the south side. After some work, that material did not materialize because there was a former landfill and leaves have to be turned. Farmers, most farmers really don't want it because it disturbs the acidity of the soil. But yes, the county would be very wise to reevaluate the position of having a leaf pickup area, disposal area for all citizens and trying to get, maybe put it on the south side in conjunction to maybe have a mutual benefit relationship with the city, South Bend's program on the north side.
Well, thank you.
Any other, any other questions or comments? All right, before calling for a vote, I've got a few comments. I am torn because the majority of the items in this ordinance, I am in agreement with. I mean, from an air quality standpoint, that's why the board of commissioners did not have a burn amnesty week during 2020. And I don't anticipate, at least if we had the ability to do it in the spring, we would do so in the spring either, regardless of that. I mean, I've talked to the sheriff and he's in favor of this amendment because they get the majority of the calls. So it would be nice that they had a bit more recourse than currently the Health Department is the enforcement mechanism of this. And we've also heard from some township fire departments who are also in favor of this because they get the backend of this. From the fire standpoint, it would be nice if they had the ability to help enforce it as well. But my primary issue is the lack of clarity with the fine structure. I mean, the first offense could be anywhere from a warning to a $1,000 fine. Second offense could be anything from $20 to $2,000. And I know this is, this is consistent with Health Department fees and fine structures that currently exist. The difference here though is with most of those fees and fines, those are all administered by the Health Department. Now we are taking this out not to just only the St. Joseph County Fire Department, but the township fire, I mean, St. Joseph County Police Department, but the township fire departments as well. And with this much ambiguity in the ordinance, my fear is we could have a situation where one entity gives a written warning or a verbal warning for something and another entity gives a $1,000 fine. While I don't think this is likely, it would be, I would appreciate if that piece could be cleaned up a little bit because to me, there's too much disparity when we have three different entities with enforcement power. And especially from a township fire department, the county has no direct relationship, or not relationship, but we've got no control or authority over the actions they may take. So once again, I'm not opposed to, if this fee ordinance, if this fee piece would have been fixed, then I would have, I would be voting in favor of this. And it also would have been nice if the council member who was against this could have maybe worked a little bit harder to make this a better ordinance in taking care of the fee and fine piece. So those are my comments. Is, I will now call for a motion.
A motion to approve ordinance number 92-20.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Still don't have leaf burning.
So that, so that, so the motion to approve does not pass. Is there another motion?
I make the motion that the ordinance be tabled.
That motion dies for lack of a second. Are there any other motions?
I make the motion that be tabled for three weeks.
What would, what kind of motion would you like for?
Just table, one table it, just table it.
Yeah, I'm like, no, no, no. We didn't pass.
Well, we have a motion to pass it and it's.
Didn't pass.
It did not pass.
Right.
But we still take a no formal.
This is Jamie Woods.
Yes.
So just under Indiana law, if you do not act to veto this within 10 days, it becomes law by operation of statute. So you can table it if you so choose, but it's going to become, it's technically passed within 10 days. So we've had a motion that it, for passage and that failed. So the other alternative, we have a motion to veto. Otherwise, the thing's going to become, become law in 10 days. So those are your options. Thank you.
Do you want a motion?
Thank you, council, for your wise comment.
Question for veto?
Second.
Okay.
I will second that motion.
Okay.
She didn't actually make a motion. She asked you if you want her to make that motion.
Oh, I could, I just made it then. And he seconded it. Okay.
I will, I will resecond.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Now, once again, what I hope happens in this is, if it goes back to council, the assumption is it will get, the veto will be overridden. And then I would like, if council was of like mind, to have them file an amendment to try and clean up the, the fine language. Since we don't anticipate there being a great deal of leaf burning now, that we're in the, the time of season that we are. So once again, I, it, I was very torn with the vote that I made. But hopefully that fine piece can get cleaned up and then I'm completely in favor of this ordinance. All right.
I agree, I agree with you too. And then hopefully then we can get a plan in place for helping maybe leaf pick up next year. Hopefully we can do that too.
Yeah, it seems the only time leaf pickup ever worked right is when it was done in-house by the Highway Department. So they would need more than the $1.2 million granted today. They need a lot more support. They'd probably bring back 13 positions being cut for the 21 budget and probably the other 10 positions cut in the last few years.
Well, we'll see what we can do ASAP.
And it's great to hear that everybody loves and supports clean air and no burning of leaves. And then to vote against this, it's, it's history.
It wasn't that though, it was just.
Democracy and progress.
Charging people a thousand dollars, $2,000, you know.
But it's funny, you have to ask Andy what you're supposed to do.
Yeah, I didn't know that I had to do that because I've never really done that before.
All right, so moving on, we have Bill 111520, ordinance 9320, from the Health Department to make modifications to their petty cash. Questions or comments?
Well, certainly the department is having a lot of activity and has to operate the year 2020 and soon 2021, that old limits on cash funds available, petty cash limits their ability to function. So certainly want them to function as well as possible.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this ordinance 93-20.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Well, that was a bundle of fun. All right. Moving on to Archives, request approval of a new software and equipment.
Hi, Katrina Carter from St. Joseph County Archives and Records Center, 1140 South Lafayette, South Bend, Indiana, 46601. I am implementing an all-in-one program here at the Archives that will enable departments and public to request documents from the Archives. And we will be able to reply to their requests through the program by sending scanned images. So it's an all-in-one, so I need to have that passed. That's one, that's an axiom and that is the same company that the Indiana State Archives and Records Center uses. And then I've asked for DocuWare because some of these items that I'm going to scan into the program can then be converted to microfilm and we can then destroy more efficiently and effectively because we'll have two copies, one scanned and then one held in the form that the state recognizes as a permanent record retention. And then I've asked for scanners.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, I'd certainly just like to commend Ms. Carter on keeping aware and trying to make our department so much more efficient and help better serve all the other departments, county and city that are dependent upon our records.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the new software and equipment.
Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, Portage Manor, request approval of contract with Arrow Pest Control.
Hi, good morning, this is Robin Chaloner, 3016 Portage Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46628. And I am speaking on behalf of Portage Manor. And I'm asking that we, so this year has posed a lot of challenges, one of which has been our pest control service at Portage Manor. We've been with our current provider since, I think, 2014. The past two years, their service has not been as good as we need or would like. I have worked to resolve the issues with kitchen staff and had meetings with our current provider several times and our maintenance department. But at this time, I feel that we have kind of lost faith in them and don't feel like we're getting good direction. So I got two quotes from two other vendors and Jim Miller with Arrow Pest Control really has a great pest management program that's very detailed, it's easy to understand, he's very helpful. And so I'm asking if we can, if we, if I can, if we can get approval for Arrow Pest Control to take care of our needs out here at Portage Manor.
Any questions or comments?
Yes. Robin, I appreciate your hard work and your dedication. You have a big facility out there that's very vital, important, and it takes care of a lot of people who are quite often easily ignored and marginalized by society. And the best problem might get worse if there is some development out there in the fields or the woods by animals and critters being chased out of their current habitat towards another place to live and they might try to go to the building. So it's, again, great and if you're checking into this and getting this resolved before the problem gets even worse. My only kind of concern is, as always, I've been a firm supporter of local businesses and local labor. And Arrow's invoice says they're out of Plymouth, which is nearby, but not in St. Joseph County. And I'm going to trust you and respect your decision based on your answer to this question. Do you feel that you've given the local companies a fair shot and that Arrow just, in your mind, surpasses their ability to serve Portage Manor?
Yes, and the current one that we have, I don't believe they, they have an office here, but I don't believe their, their main office is local. And Arrow does have a local office in South Bend, so.
Thank you, that's good to know. Maybe they can promote that on their invoicing.
Yeah.
If it's attached, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the contract with Arrow Pest Control for Portage Manor.
Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request approval of contract with Magnum Security Services, Inc.
Okay, again, Robin Chaloner, Portage Manor. This contract as well, we are now having 24-hour security since the lockdown in March. We have a vulnerable population here at Portage Manor that has been sheltering in place since March. So we have to have 24-hour security to, people are dropping off packages and it's a full-time job to man the front door. We also have to check temps, only essential staff are allowed in. So the current provider that we have, they're not able to meet 24-hour needs. So we looked around at another company, other companies in the area, and Magnum, they're actually cheaper and they are able to provide 24-hour security needs. So I'm asking that we could change and get a contract with Magnum. Our current provider, I don't believe their billing office is local. This was a contract that was in place before I took this position and Magnum, I believe they're local. Hello?
Andy, you there?
Sorry, I accidentally muted myself. Robin, is there, kind of to Commissioner Thomas's point about finding a local company, if we're unsure, is it a great deal of heartburn if we table this? Because we do have a meeting next week, if we could find those answers out since this kind of is an existing contract. And also then have, has this been sent out for bid?
No, because of the urgency of needing, so the nursing staff has been covering the time to monitor the door, which is very difficult, especially in the evening when they're passing meds and there's no one in the front door and on the weekends. So we just kind of looked around and shot a few emails. I guess it wasn't like an actual bidding process. But again, because of the urgency of needing somebody like yesterday, and we've been doing this since November 12th, the current company has not been able to provide, and they, they didn't even give us like a long notice. They, I got like a call on a Saturday saying, we don't have anyone to cover this shift. And then, so we've been doing our best to cover the door and ensure safety here and residents aren't exiting and people that shouldn't be here aren't dropping things off, they're inappropriate. And then I'm pretty, pretty, pretty sure this is a local contract. I mean, I, I was digging through these papers. It does say here Magnum Security Services, 601 South Bend Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, and that is on their proposal. So I'm, I'm pretty, pretty confident that they are a local company.
So I guess, Counselor, my question for you is, does this meet the needs of an emergent situation or what's your recommendation?
If you're comfortable that she's exhausted the local options and you can go ahead and proceed, it doesn't meet the needs of an emergency situation, yes, I mean, we need to make sure the residents of Portage Manor are an environment that's free from what's been described here. As well, it's, it's a service that there's a limited pool of people and you're, and she's reached out to several, it sounds like, and people have had a full and fair opportunity to proceed with this. It's not a requirement, you get a RFP for this type of project, you can invite quotes and she's, and she's went through that process.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
Well, yes, and I would agree that with the pandemic, that's allowed some suspension of some of the bidding process. Certainly this topic didn't come up under the last issue of pest control, so I consider that, you know, following the non-standard processes allowed and liberated by the pandemic issues and emergencies and certainly the care, as Counselor said, the care and safety welfare of the Portage Manor residents takes precedence on a lot of things. Very glad to hear it is a local firm with probably employing local people. And I would just comment, you know, Robin, you know, I and many, everybody I think cares very dearly about Portage Manor, when you said the word sheltering in place through this whole pandemic, it made me realize, of course, that where the clients usually would maybe go bowling or to the zoo or something to try to cheer them up, to relieve stress, make their lives a little bit better, none of that has been taking place, so. And that's been made it harder on the client, the clients. And it's been harder on all American citizens and St. Joe County residents and your staff as well. But the vulnerability of your, of your clients, you know, they may, you feel the feelings of the loss of ability to go out and do stuff, they might feel it more deeply than others. So again, kudos to Robin, you and your staff. We thank you very much. Commissioner Castellani, I think with citizens, come to the microphone to make a comment.
And again, this is Dr. Dove Fleming and I just really want to support what Robin really needs for the Portage Manor. So whatever she suggests, I certainly agree with that.
David Nader.
Thank you, Derek Dieter, 1740 Portage Avenue. In regards to this, I would assume the company's insured and we have the, I guess, the threshold of what lays on the county and what lays on the security company as far as any liability issues?
Yeah, there's a contract here.
Pardon me?
There's a contract.
Okay, is that in there?
I'm sure that our legal department would have done that.
Okay. Also, do you know, are these security people, are they armed?
No.
Okay. But there is a distinction of what, the threshold of what they're able to do on a security aspect and what liability lays upon the county if there's an issue.
Yeah, that's probably all worked out. That's probably all worked out.
I guess, is that the question for your attorney, to make sure that that's covered?
Yeah. Well, technically, this is public comment, so we don't have to respond to your questions.
Got you.
Yeah, you need to make the comment.
Not our first pro video.
Well, sometimes you get knocked off the horse.
Not unless you're that one sheriff, what was it, Radke or something? What was the name, Sheriff Radke?
Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion?
A motion to approve this contract with Magnum Security Services Incorporated for Portage Manor.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all. Next up, Infrastructure Planning and Growth, request approval of St. Joseph County Fleet Maintenance and Management Program, 2015 Ford Cargo Van.
I'm Jessica Clark, County Engineer, offices on the seventh and eleventh floor for the firm, Infrastructure Planning and Growth. Before you is a consideration to buy out the lease for a cargo van that we utilize within our high department. In November of 2019, we approved the lease extension for our fleet program into 2020 and throughout this year, we've been replacing and switching out those vehicles. This particular vehicle does not see the same wear and tear as our others and it would be a vehicle that as the consolidation occurs, would be decommissioned for use prior to the next lease period. So we recommend purchasing the van for our use during this timeframe as it would be an overall savings over the life of that lease to do so.
Any questions or comments?
It looks like from the paperwork and Madam Engineer's report is a wise decision. It looks like you're only running a few miles a year anyway, so probably the wear and turn of vehicle, it's a good deal. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to buy out the lease of the fleet cargo van.
Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request approval of S3031619 Rehabilitation of Bridge 303, SBL over Indiana Toll Road Project Completion Affidavit.
Yes, for your approval is our project completion affidavit for the rehabilitation of our bridge over the toll road. The final project cost was $1,730,251,000, 30,000.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to accept a completion affidavit.
Second.
Motion, a second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request approval of professional service proposal grant consulting and advocacy agreement with TAI Ginsburg and Associates LLC.
Good morning, Bill Shaly of Economic Development Director with offices, or part of Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth with offices on the seventh and eleventh floor. Before you today is a memorandum that includes the contract proposal with TAI Ginsburg and Associates LLC to provide the redevelopment commission, the county grant consulting and legislative advocacy.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Shaly, is this like lobbying with a DC firm?
It is, yes.
Do they have a local office?
They, they're based out of Chicago.
Okay, not even in our beautiful state of Indiana?
No, absolutely. No, they're in Chicago, with offices in DC.
But, but not too far if we take the South Shore, right?
Exactly, the South Shore will be fine, their office is right outside the South Shore office.
Yeah, this is something I'm not going to support at all. The DC firm, I'm not against lobbying, maybe not even against DC firms, but I see here we're going to be, you know, go for grants, blah, 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 blah. Our departments already do that. It's going to contact congressional leaders. You know, I'm sure Nancy Pelosi is very busy and although she loves Indiana, and I'm sure she gave it a lot of concern while Mike Pence is from here, his vice president the last four years, I'm sure he did all for Indiana, he could. I see that it's to work with the Indiana Enterprise Center, IEC, which to me is BAD, the Bennix Field and Freight Logistics Park, not a big fan of that, to also help with the relocation of the Chicago South Shore Railroad to the airport, which would mean the Western Route, not supporting that. Other projects, which is just a blanket record, I just don't approve that says up to $60,000. I'd rather see another highway worker. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Bill, is this, what do we anticipate the, the end result or the benefit of engaging this firm?
So over the last couple of years, we've applied for several, several grants, for example, the EDA grant to provide, hey, the fiber optic conduit out to New Carlisle. This group was very instrumental in helping us get that grant. We've applied for several other grants. We do anticipate that the grant climate in the coming year is going to be very favorable, so we, and as we have positioned ourselves better to obtain grants by doing redevelopment work in some of these areas, we believe that we'll be in a much better position. But having the ability to have the, kind of some inside baseball in the DC environment helps. This firm is very big, they do a lot of work with the Department of Transportation and with the Department of Commerce, two of the big areas where we apply for grants. So the ability to have those connections helps as we apply for grants.
So in essence, this is a modest investment that could lead to a very substantial return, so.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Yeah, a motion to. Yeah, a motion to approve this grant's consulting and advocacy agreement with TAI Ginsburg and Associates LLC.
Second. We have a motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item requests approval of Professional Service Proposal Iverson Group Disposition Appraisal Services FJC County Garage New Car Listles.
So, the next two items are related, they're both, as part of the process to dispose of county-owned property or property owned by the redevelopment, you're required to get two independent appraisals. As we look to consider disposing of the former county garage in New Carlisle, a garage which has been closed since July, we'd like to get two independent appraisals of this. So the first proposal is for Iverson Grove, in the amount of $2,000, and staff had asked for your approval of that proposal.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Shalio, this is the South Land, correct?
That is, this, this is, yes.
Counselor, fellow commissioners, I got no objection if the next two matters are discussed equally and voted on at the same time.
Counselor, thoughts?
Perfectly fine.
All right, well then also, request approval of Professional Service Proposal Appraisal Services, Inc., disposition appraisal services, SJC County Garage New Carlisle.
So the first independent appraisal would be done by Iverson Grove in the amount of $2,000, this would be done by Appraisal Services in the amount of $1,800. Again, we're required to appraisals before we can begin down the path for disposition of property. Any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
And I, and I will note that because we have the appraisals does not mean that we have any obligation to dispose of that property, but it gives us an idea of what, if we did, what we would get. Any questions or comments?
Yes, once again, I see the county constantly and foolishly wanting to buy and sell land. Here we own this land, and obviously we're getting prices to possibly sell it, when it should, it should have remained a highway garage. And was, was the last meeting, or the meeting before, we bought land, what, a half a mile from intersection of Larison and 2, for Larison 2 improvement, to possibly go north to 20, which again is a huge pipe train, probably 50 years down the road, if you can keep this delusion alive for 50 years. And this parcel of land would probably better suit that project. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve these two appraisal companies.
Second. We have a motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Aye.
Motion passes, two to one. Finally, requests approval of Lock Mueller Group Professional Services for New Carlisle Project Area.
So the proposal before you today is in the Lock Mueller Group, has two, two parts. First, is to provide developments and design guidelines and design work for a town loop, a 1.15-mile loop from Timothy Road into the town by the library school, up north to US-20 and back to Timothy Road. That loop is part of the work that we have discussed with the town, part of the work that we originally were going to put in our grant, but as we've looked at the numbers and as we've looked at the values, we believe that this could be done as a private project for, for less in value than we would pay as part of the grant. So the opportunity to move this part of the project forward is a huge win for us. So that's the first part of this work. The second part is the design and development of intersection, intersection plans for the intersection of State Road 2 and Larison, those would be done in coordination within that. And then also the ultimate development of the north-south corridor between State Road 2 and US-20. The work is needed to get us into a position where we can have a shovel-ready project so that we can get funding from the federal project, again, tying back into the grant work that we talked about three proposals earlier. So this is all connected, it's all in an effort to move forward the development of the core development area, the Indiana Enterprise Center, and we'd ask for your approval of this proposal. Any questions, if you have to answer them.
Are there in fact any questions or comments?
I certainly, again, see this as more waste than the IEC. The first contract for the fiber optics, it's a shame that the citizens, the town, the school loop wasn't involved in the original discussions for the last several years. Every time that there was promise that it was going to them, for the last several years, I pointed out it obviously wasn't, and it didn't, and now it's, now it's coming, maybe after the grants are gone. The second issue, again, this intersection, north-south corridor, State Road 2-Laris intersection, that's state road, the state should be paying for that. I like, I like some of the components that, you know, if federal funding, we were going to be sought, I think that's just a typo, that we meant to say were, I'm sure, that if federal funding, you know, there's ifs and wheres, and that's just not the way business should be done, and planning should be done. Development should be done by those who own the property, state highways should be paid for by the state, and this is just more BAD, IEC waste.
Ms. Shalio, any, can you comment on the, the first item that Commissioner Thomas mentioned about that the town, library, school were not included in the initial fiber optics loop?
Yeah, so the initial loop design was, was taken from State Road 2 up Timothy, up the US-20, and then back into town. The town loop came up as a, as a request, really by the town, the library and the school, to better provide fiber optic opportunities for the library, for the school, the school system, and, and then ultimately the town businesses along the town corridor. So that part of the project came later, after we applied and had received the grant. The opportunity to amend the grant is there, but we would incur a tremendous amount of additional cost to get the work done to the level required by the EDA. And when we've done the estimates, we, we believe that the work could be done more efficiently and actually probably tied into the project that we're going to award next week, instead of having to be part of the grant, so we'd actually get a better value for our dollar by doing it outside of the grant work in this particular case.
Thank you.
I think we need some clarification, because it almost sounded like the opposite of what the original maps were. To better clarify what you said, the route was to take Timothy Road, and then I think you said take 20 and go through town, it didn't take 20 and go through town, it hit 20 and went directly east, the opposite direction of the library and the schools and the majority of the town of New Carlisle. In fact, it barely even skirted and touched the town.
But I, I guess, I'm sorry, Commissioner Thomas, when I said the town, I meant the bigger town, the town of South Bend, so it went back towards town, went back towards the city of South Bend, so...
Oh, you meant South Bend, okay.
Yes, because that's where ultimately the pipe ends up.
South Bend, as you well know, is a city, based on its population.
It is. And colloquially, we can call it a town.
Well, if they lose, how many thousands of people?
To be a town versus a city, I'm not sure what that number is, it'll be 42,000, 47,000.
Yeah, and, and, and for the county to try to compete with the city of South Bend for economic development is not only foolish, it's just kind of wrong, because we should be supporting South Bend and its developments and its brownfields, is what I've said all along for years.
Yeah, yeah, we actually do compliment each other, so we'd be very disagreeing on that.
All right, then. And a Merry Christmas to you.
And to you.
All right.
Can I just ask too, I just want to make sure, because you said that New Carlisle wanted to move forward with this in the right way, right? Yeah, and I'm glad that we're able, again, to help them and move forward and get the right things done for them, so that would be good, so that's...
Are they paying for it?
No. No, we're going to help them.
Oh, that's nice.
It's what we used to have funds for.
Right. Just like to help people, that's just me.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Yes, a motion to approve the Lock Mueller Group for the Professional Services for the New Carlisle Project Area.
Second. We have a motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion passes, two to one. I believe that wraps up the, the normal portion of the agenda, we'll move on to public comments. Are there any public comments?
Commissioner Castelini, there was the add-on to possibly untape the matter...
Oh, you're correct, my apologies.
Old business, yeah, old business.
It's old business, so I, I think it's within the realm that it didn't need to be advertised as an add-on.
Yep. Yep, yep, thank you for that. So we will move on to old business, and we have an agreement from Public Works.
But the, our bid awards...
I think we need a motion on table.
Pardon, sorry.
Just Andy.
Still moved?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right, Jessica.
Thank you, Jessica, Clark County Engineer, Department of Engineering and Structure Planning and Growth on the 7th and 11th floors. The matter that we discussed at the last meeting and was tabled, this is a bid award request for our federal award ID number 060106128. It is our RDC broadband expansion project. We received five bids, and we recommend that the board commissioners consider the need to be unlimited ink bid in the amount of $1,731,662.50 is the most responsive, responsible bidder. These funds are available through our grant and local match within our special, special tax district bond fund for the New Carlisle Economic Development Area. We did receive EDA's certification for authorization to awards, we recommend for purpose.
Any questions or comments?
Yes. When we discussed this last, Madam Engineer, I had pointed out that I had some concerns whether Davis Bacon was filed, and I'm sure the county RBO was not filed, filed, that tends not to me. And I also wondered about it being a union local firm. And at the meeting later, Mr. Mann, I believe, Gene Mann, mentioned that they belong to Christians Workers Local Ten, and, which is a union I had not heard of. You know, I expect to hear, you know, laborers, electricians, you know, something more traditional. But there definitely is a local ten, a Christian laborers union. I went to their website, it says they do not discriminate against people of other religions, which is good, because the name Christian might miss and represent what their, what their group is, you know? It might even cause some people to be fearful, or think they're not an equal opportunity employer, you know, if they, if they use that labor union. Do you know if that union has a apprenticeship program?
I am not infinitely familiar with the operations of the union.
Okay. Well, I'd like to know that before I would vote on this matter favorably, or not favorably.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the bid award to the TGB Unlimited incorporation.
Second. We have a motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Aye.
Motion passes, two to one. Thank you, Jessica. Now, I believe, we are ready for public comments. Are there any public comments? Hearing none. A motion to recess is in order.
Still moved?
Second.
Motion is second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, tough luck, we are recessed. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Take care, Andy, thank you, Counselor, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Hammond.
Thank you all very much.
Have a good rest of the day and week.